Welcome to the Board of Education's January 3rd, 2022 Work Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Watson.
As was public notice, the Board met an executive session this afternoon at 4:30 PM with members from the Knox County Law Department.
Mr. Dupler, would you mind sharing information regarding executive session?
Be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it was a regularly scheduled executive session and that's a time for the Board to hear from our law department about pending litigation and proposed litigation. It was just a time for the Board to hear from us. The Board did not deliberate any issues or discuss any issues amongst themselves. It is an exception to the Open Meetings Act under Smith County Education Association versus Anderson and at least one other case. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder that our meeting schedule has changed for 2022 and we will now be holding our work sessions on the first Monday of each month with the regular session to follow the same week on Wednesday night. So we will meet back in this room on Wednesday, January 5th for a regular session. And Ms. Satterfield will not be in attendance tonight due to illness and I believe Mr. McMillan will be here but this Friday night. And our next policy review meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 19.
Welcome to the Board of Education's January 3, 2022 Work Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Watson.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice as well.
As was public notice, the Board met an executive session this afternoon at 4:30 PM with members from the Knox County Law Department. Mr. Dupler, would you mind sharing information regarding executive session?
Be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it was a regularly scheduled executive session and that's a time for the Board to hear from our law department about pending litigation and proposed litigation. It was just a time for the Board to hear from us. The Board did not deliberate any issues or discuss any issues amongst themselves. It is an exception to the Open Meetings Act under Smith County Education Association versus Anderson and at least one other case. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder that our meeting schedule has changed for 2022 and we will now be holding our work sessions on the first Monday of each month with the regular session to follow the same week on Wednesday night. So we will meet back in this room on Wednesday, January 5th for a regular session. And Ms. Satterfield will not be in attendance tonight due to illness and I believe Mr. McMillan will be here this Friday night. Our next policy review meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 19th at 1:30 PM in the Andrew Johnson Building Boardroom. And also the Joint Education Committee will meet on Wednesday, January 19th at 4:00 PM in the Andrew Johnson Building Boardroom. Are there any requested changes to the agenda? Do we have, do we have approved by Ms. Horn, is there second, second by Mr. Watson, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And so next we will have our internal school funds audit report and Mr. McPherson, do you want to lead into this for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have our auditors here today. I think Ted Hoats from Pew is going to present.
Hello. Thank you, Ron and Madam Chair. I believe as attached to the agenda, you have a copy of the audit report and also a copy of the governance letter, which I will go over here in a moment. I'm going to focus on the compliance section because that's the area that gets the most attention, but I will also briefly talk about the governance letter, which was attached, and also go over some general numbers. On the governance letter first, since it's shorter, this is basically a general communication between audit firms directly to a board, a finance committee, in this case, the Board of Education. It basically discusses required communications and what our responsibilities are, plan, scope, and timing of the audit, significant accounting practices. Basically, if you follow the bolded areas of the first two pages of the letter, there were no significant audit adjustments made. It mentioned references, internal control matters and compliance findings. Sometimes it won't be information in the letter, but instead it will reference to another document or a reference to the audit report. In this case, the compliance findings are referenced to the bound audit report or, I was so used to saying bound audit report, the PDF copy of the audit report. And a copy of the management representation is attached to this letter. That is basically what management has represented to us and that's basically the governance letter. Typically, there'd be more content in here because there'd be a lot of estimates or other information, but this is really, while the audit of the internal school funds is a lot of work, it's still a simple balance sheet, so they're not estimates or a lot of assumptions made as part of the audit. It's just a lot of testing. With that, I will, if there are no questions on that letter, I'll skip to the audit report itself. And as general information, of course, this is a huge report. I'm going to spend most of the time in the very back of it, but in the very beginning is right after, I guess really the second page, is the table of contents. So this is the different areas of the report, the, our independent auditor's report, combined financial statements, then individual school statements. One thing in this PDF copy that's different this year from last year, if you want to look at the school activity for a particular school, all you need to do, in this case, go to the table of contents and click on the link. The table of contents is, the blue area basically represents a link, so you can click on the link and go directly to that school. I'll step back for a minute and remind everybody that we are auditing, this, this report is on the internal school funds, which means it's basically the checkbook that's held at each individual school. And we audit each individual school, all approximately 90 schools separately. It does not include the finances of the central office. So that is part of the audit report that's included in the Knox County Government Report. There are separate schedules for Knox, for Knox County Schools there, basically the central office activity at that point. So this is just really the activity at the individual schools, but it's still a lot of activity and that's where it requires a lot of testing. Like I said, we do test a significant number of transactions at each school, receipts, disbursements, look at all sorts of supporting documentation. But, you know, again, if you want to look at a particular school, all you got to do is go to the table of contents, click on the link and it should take you right there. I will jump forward then to the audit report, well, not very far. It's really right after the table of contents. And if you, it's a three-page report, but this is your standard internal audit report for, for a Tennessee school system, internal school funds. I say that because there's some unique language in here. This report is in compliance with the Tennessee State Manual instead of generally accepted accounting principles. So it states in the report that it's not in compliance with GAAP, but instead in compliance with regulatory basis as required by the state of Tennessee. So if you're looking at the report and, you know, trying to follow along the language, just keep in mind, this is the standard, basically clean opinion report that a, that a school system for internal school funds report would have. Right after the audit report, opinion section are the combined statements. So you can see the activity from each individual school here in summary form, and I'm not going to go over that in any way except to say that the total cash held at the end of the year, at the end of the year was June 30 of 2021, was, was roughly $12 million held in the checking accounts for, for all the schools. So at the school level, so that's still a healthy amount of money and, and that's kind of shown on the bottom of page two in the first column. And then as far as, also like to point out what the total revenues and expenditures are in these funds for all schools, that's on the bottom of page four. Total revenues were about 13.1 million and total expenditures about 13.4 million. So a lot, a lot of small transactions, but, but a lot of dollars still involved, you know, and this is as well, really the last two years, less activity because we've been, you know, dealing with COVID and so it's a lot, lot less activities at the school level because these numbers are, have been as high as $20 million of ins and outs. So regardless, still, still a lot of activity goes to the schools and, and that's why these funds are required to be audited because just, as we'll get into in the other section, only so many controls in place just because of limited accounting personnel, limited number of accounting personnel. So that's why an audit is required. So I'll skip forward to the findings section, which is on report, report on that, it's a two-page report, first of all, that's on pages 338 and 339. And then the actual findings themselves start on page 340 and go through page, it's, 340 is our report number page. If you're following the PDF, the PDF page is 351. So, and I'm not going to go through these in detail. I will instead focus on the summary page, which is page 351. Our report number 351, probably roughly 362 from a PDF page number. This lists the prior year findings and I'm going to go kind of compare current year to prior year. The findings were in the area of segregation of duties, they, they went up a little bit, the number of instances, negative fund balances was two, dispersments, three, finding four is receipts, number five is purchase order, six is ticket reconciliations, seven is fundraising and resale activities, eight school support organizations, nine was approval of transfers, 10 a year ago was travel policy. That one has been corrected, so that's a good thing. Unclaimed property repeats and we have one new finding and that is, I believe it's listed as number 11 confirmed, yes, 11 this year, and that's on class accounts. While it's listed as a new finding, it really is not a new issue. It's been combined in another issue in the past. It's just, it's a focus area from the state, since it's a focus area from the state, they were expecting us to break it out into a separate finding. Overall, from these findings compared current year to prior year, we had an increase in, in four of them, an increase in number of instances, a decrease in three of them, three findings were about the same and one was resolved. So from that standpoint, I guess that's a decrease too. And then one issue that's related to another issue that, that's been pulled out as a separate one this year. So in reality, you know, number of instances are pretty similar across the board to, to prior years. And I guess I'll make this comment, there's too many activities, too much turnover at the bookkeeper level, you know, principals, their, their number one focus is not on these accounts, is part of it, but it's not the number one focus. So there are, and we're, we're testing at, you know, multiple transactions, 2025 transactions at multiple schools, well, I mean, at every school, that many receipts, that many disbursements, looking at purchase orders, so forth. There are going to be exceptions. So for a school system this size, the findings are not going to go away, except for ones that are kind of isolated to where you only have a few instances. But what, what the goal is, what we would like to see is, you know, fewer instances. I kind of compare our instances up, down, or about the same and overall across the board this year, they're about the same. This is a big report. I know you haven't had it for that long, finalizing it in the end of December, then, and then it's, you know, roughly a 400-page report, takes a little while, but if there are any questions, I'll certainly be glad to answer them. And also if you want time to digest it and call me back for another meeting, I'm certainly welcome to do that too. And with, with that in mind as well, I will present this as well to the Knox County Audit Committee. So, any questions?
So do we have any questions right now, anybody? Okay, thank you.
And as well, if questions come up, you're welcome to route them through Ron or Garrett and get them to me or bring me back. And I want to thank Ron and Garrett and Heidi and that team because they, while it's, it's a process during all the testing that we do, that they're very helpful in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, a few updates for you this evening. First of all, I'd like to begin by wishing everyone a Happy New Year. I hope that our families and employees had a safe and restful winter break and that they were able to enjoy time with loved ones and reflect on this past year. As you know, today was an inclement weather day for district staff based on a winter weather warning that was issued through 10:00 AM by the National Weather Service. I want to thank our employees for their flexibility in this regard. While we recognize the importance of in-service days to support preparations for a new semester, we did feel it was necessary to err on the side of caution given the potential for hazardous road conditions this morning. On a related note, I do encourage our students, families, and employees to make sure that they have a plan in place for inclement weather. The months of January, February, and sometimes even March can be unpredictable and the district does have several weather days available in case of snow, ice, or other hazardous conditions. Also, there may be days when we delay school for an hour or two, so please think about contingency plans or delays such as this. While we cannot avoid all the disruptions caused by the weather, having a plan in place can help our families and employees mitigate those disruptions. We look forward to having our staff and students back at school tomorrow as we start a new semester. Madam Chair, all members, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a student data spotlight tonight to slip.
Yes, we have student data spotlight and John, I guess you'll turn it over to Shannon or Shannon's going to take over, one, one of the two, so Shannon. And let me just say, before Shannon starts, I know, back to Ted, appreciate Pew and associates and Ted's team for all the work they do to help us be better with, you know, we're good stewards of the, of the, of the parents and students, the funds that come into our schools and they work very hard and very closely with us to help make us better. And I also like to commend Garrett, Garrett Raiden and his team. They, they work really hard supporting, what, 90 some odd bookkeepers, I guess, Garrett? And, and the turnover, you know, 35, 40 positions a year, which really makes it difficult. You know, Garrett and his team do training and, and Garrett is, I'll have to say this about Garrett, he is, he's ever mindful of ways to try to help make us, make us better and to eliminate those findings. So Garrett, I just want you to know, we appreciate you and your team and all you do to, to help make us better financial stewards of student activity funds, so thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk through some of our academic initiatives and some of our priorities for District One. We've, we've brought to you quite a bit of information that we have gathered through needs assessments that started last summer. We've continued to work into the fall with developing our ESER plans. And out of that, we have determined three areas that I'm going to focus on tonight and then also focusing on a District One feeder pattern initiative that we have in motion. And first I want to say, these are the initiatives that we're focused on. They're funded through multiple streams. Some of them have some general purpose funding. A lot of them are accelerated because of ESER, but we've also braided in some of our title dollars in order to build out some sustainability. So I'll be happy to talk through that as we, as we go through this presentation. As soon as I figure out the clicker. There it goes. Okay, so our academic initiatives. The three that I'm focusing on right now are the K-2 Reading Foundational Skills Initiative, our 6-8 Algebra I, foundational math, and then looking at career exploration and reimagining high schools. These three emerged as our top initiatives as we looked at the impact of our COVID closures, the disruptions last year, and then also thinking about the resources that we have put into these three initiatives and how we can use these, the, the funds we have available to us right now to accelerate the direction we need to go. We know that in each of these three areas, we have really great teachers. We have, we have, we have curriculum in place that aligns to these standards and that builds in a sequential fashion so that our students get what they need from kindergarten through 12th grade. And we've invested in pre-K so that, so that the students who are in pre-K are getting those early foundational skills. But using the, the funds available to us right now, we're looking at how we take what we have and invest deeply in these three areas, make these three areas a priority so that we can make sure we're maximizing the resources that we've put into them. K-2 Reading Foundational Skills, we know that this is the, the critical time for our students to build those reading skills and that's foundational to everything else that they do in school. So that is one of the reasons why this is a very big priority for us. In looking at both Knox County, the state, and the country, middle grades math has suffered quite a bit in the last several years and the outcome of that is Algebra I. So really putting some good attention into middle grades math and through that also looking at building a pipeline of middle grades math teachers is, is one of our priorities that I'll talk about in a few minutes. And then reimagining high school, and a lot of you have been involved in some of that work, so I'll touch on that a little bit as we get into that. But then we also have the District One priority and in that, we're looking at, at working with our, our principals in District One and understanding with them what are our needs, what are our assets, and how do we use what is available to us now to, to get a surge in District One. So we've had an initial planning meeting and I'll share that as, as we move forward. Okay, so K-2 Foundational Skills. Some direct student support that you'll see here is we are participating in the Tennessee All Core Tutoring. We have hired someone to coordinate that and work with the state. And so we are starting our first, our first run with that tutoring will be in the spring. We've already contacted some of the schools and are, are looking to hire tutors to work in K-2 Foundational Reading and in 6-8 Math. So as we're looking in the Foundational Skills reading, what we've learned is that the tutoring is effective when it is, when it's a constrained skill. So when it is learning the alphabet, learning the letter names and sounds, those are places where a tutor can really help a child to accelerate. And working with our curriculum, so our tutors will be trained in understanding the curriculum, knowing what's coming up, working with the teacher, so that they are working it with a very small number of students, it's a one to three ratio, to help those students accelerate those skills so that we can have them on grade level by third grade. We're also working on a family and caregiver web portal for home supports. So we've been working with several of our teachers. And we have our teachers creating some videos and some resources that parents can use or caregivers can use to help support those skills at home so that so they have that access. We have that for math as well, the the K-2 foundational math. We have to have that for K-5 math on a YouTube channel. And those are things that are now behind, behind a paywall because they are using our curriculum support, but parents who've signed in as as access to their students' Aspen courses would be able to access those materials. So a couple of things I wanted to talk about with the Reading Foundational Skills. We've spent the last semester working on a vision of what it means to be foundationally sound in reading and in math, and working on with two schools in particular to see if they can write a vision that matches our vision but is specific to them. So that's something we've been working on with Sunny View and with Maynard. Aligning our materials to that vision, making sure that we have data and assessments so that both the teachers and the schools can look at that information and make in the moment adjustments or changes to interventions or supports or home contact if they need to in order to be able to support the child so that growth happens consistently and over time. Working on developing talent so that we have teachers who want to be in Knox County schools and stay in Knox County schools so that especially in some of our more at-risk schools, we don't have a high turnover with teachers. And also, as we start to get into some of the hard-to-staff areas, that we've got a strategic plan for hiring and retaining people who who can teach in those hard-to-staff areas. And then also looking at our use of time. So that's something that, you know, as we have been doing some of the walkthroughs and and working with with teachers, understanding where they feel like the time is not being spent where it needs to be, and how do we help to make sure that all of our minutes in instruction are spent doing the intense work of teaching students to read. So how we're going about and supporting this, we have been working with instruction partners. And you'll, we want to continue that work. You'll see something on the agenda tonight for to be able to continue working with them. And so we've piloted with Maynard and Sunny View, working on walkthroughs, developing their vision that aligns to our vision, looking at our professional development supports that come out of a needs assessment that comes from focus groups with their teachers on what's working, what's not working, what do they need in order to be, to get the results that they would like to be getting with their students. And then progress monitoring, setting up what are the data points that we're going to be monitoring and tracking. And that's not just the hard formal data, but what's the informal data that we need to be gathering? And that, one of the really beneficial parts of that was the focus group with the teachers where the nice thing with the external partner is everybody from Knox County left the room and the external partner held the focus group with the teachers and then debriefed with us what the teachers had to say. So that helped inform us of what we needed to do to be supportive of them. And that's where having that external evaluation is helpful as well. So as we look at that, our, this is our literacy and numeracy vision for Knox County schools. It's, it's small. I hope you can, I can send it to you in a in a Word document if that's probably a lot easier to read. But we are, we believe that all students can and will read proficiently and that they'll be able to work flexibly with numbers. It's really important for us, for people to understand that we're not talking about fast when we're talking about working fluently with both reading and with math. We are talking about their ability to to think flexibly, for them to be able to read at the speed, the the rate of speech and to have expression so that they're conveying, they understand what they're reading as they read it. And when we talk about fluency with numbers, we're talking about fluency in terms of, if you think about water moving through through a stream, if it comes up against a rock, it doesn't stop. It finds a way to fluidly move around that rock. So with math, they may find another way to arrive at that answer if they understand how numbers work. So that's what we're working for in terms of fluency. We do see that reading is the the predictor of high school graduation and continuing education, and so is that that Algebra I is a really important indicator as well. So that's why we have that that algebra focus. We are committed to solidifying the foundational literacy skills and strong number sense in line with the Tennessee State Standards. And with that, we're aligning our high-quality instructional materials, which includes explicit foundational skills instruction as well as knowledge of the world. That's one of the differences that we see in curriculum now versus curriculum 15, 20 years ago. It's that consistent build in knowledge so that students have the the knowledge and the understanding that gives them the background knowledge to be able to develop as proficient readers. We want students to be able to build, talk, and write about numbers, and we want them to be able to read, talk, and write about texts every day in their classrooms. And as I said, we're looking at having, when we talk about reading proficiently, they're reading complex grade-level text accurately with an appropriate rate, which is conversational, with expression, and with understanding. So they can read it, as they read it, they have the prosody, it sounds like they understand what they're reading, but they can also tell us after they've read it a little summary of what they've read. And so we're looking to support everybody in building a culture around reading and writing. And we are also working to build a culture around the wonder and joy of mathematics while also monitoring student progress. So this is the Knox County vision. What we've been working with Maynard and Sunny View is for them to develop a school vision that fits in with this vision but is specific to their school. And what we see developing over time is that we, these are our two pilot schools, they're helping us to figure out how this work, they're giving us the insight of how this works at a school level. And then we plan to have six more schools next year and then move to 25 more schools the year after that. By that point, what we've seen happen is that it becomes part of the culture of how we do things, and the other schools are taking a lead and helping to support that work. So that's what we, that's what we anticipate will happen here. We have a similar plan for the 6-8 math with Algebra I as the indicator of whether or not we are being successful there. Again, we have tutoring services. One of the places here that we are adding in a particular talent and coordination effort is as we are hiring tutors, if they are in a university program, they can be a tutor. And so we're looking to find people who maybe aren't in an education pathway, but they seem to really have a knack for teaching math with our students as they're tutoring. And we have set aside some scholarship dollars to identify people who could be good math teachers for us and to work with them, for them to go through a math program, and we will cover some of their tuition costs for them to then come back and be a math teacher for us for three years. Math, particularly anybody certified in Algebra I or high school math can be very hard to come by. So this is a, this is a way that we can hopefully build our bench of math teachers. We also have a retention plan here for identifying some teachers who would be good mentors. So some of our existing math teachers who would be good mentors for our, our teachers who are potentially coming out of this this tutoring plan, or being able to hire some math teachers as apprentices to work with a mentor teacher that we then have ready to go into a classroom should we have a maternity leave, need a supply position for an illness or something like that. So we're really trying to be cognizant of how we could invest in developing our, our number of math teachers who are available to us. So again, we are working on identifying an external vendor to help us with this work, and we're looking to pilot with two schools. In this case, we're looking for two schools that have a large number of multilingual learners and economically disadvantaged students because those are the two groups of students who are highly impacted by the closure during COVID or by some of the disruption. And also, as we look at the, because math is so language-based, if we look at our multilanguage learners and and invest in some of those strategies, it really will help all students to succeed in in math. So again, looking to continue to progress monitoring that and having an external evaluation. For us, the external evaluation is really important so that we are getting good feedback on whether or not what we're doing is is effective and working, both from the student standpoint and from the school standpoint. So again, we've been working with the reimagining high schools. We've been doing this work with Ford NGL. And this is something where, you know, as a community, we're working on developing our vision for what what high schools look like. How do we partner with communities? And what does professional development look like as we start to to shift our thinking into helping our students really think about high school as a place to, to start thinking about the career pathway, whether they choose their career pathway in high school or they just start to understand how to make a plan and how to ask good questions and get the experiences they need in order to make decisions about what they want to do after school. Because whether our students are going through high school and going straight to work or going through a terminal PhD program, at the end of the day, we all want them to have employment, if that's what they choose, or to enlist, or to enroll, or to to stay home and and do what they want to do at home. But whatever our kids want to do, we want them to have the choice to be able to do that and to know how to set themselves up and make a plan for that option. So advising here is really important, and advising not just with counselors but with everybody in the schools, knowing and understanding how to have those conversations with students so that they see the end game is is post-high school, not not during high school. So here we have our partner, Ford Next Generation Learning. We've gone through the explore phase. We've gone through the envisioning phase, and we're in the master planning phase. So we are, I think, January 25th, having our third master planning session to look at all the independent plans and to figure out the interdependencies so that we have a starting point for actually starting to implement the work. Again, we're progress monitoring what this looks like and working with external evaluation to make sure that we're getting from this work what we want. So in in all three of these initiatives, we're really looking to make sure that our students, we have, we have a lot of students who do well in Knox County schools, but we also have some students who need more attention and more strategic support. And all three of these initiatives are really focused on making sure that we are identifying every student who needs those individual supports and is getting what they need to be successful. So with that, I mentioned that we have the District One feeder pattern strategic planning meetings. This is, we've had an initial meeting where we pulled together all of the principals from District One, and we did a SWOOR analysis with them. So broke up into groups. This was all done on Post-it notes, and then we had a really robust conversation around it, but really thinking through like, what are our strengths? So what we identified in our strengths is that, you know, the admins champion the initiatives in their schools. There's a lot of trust between admin and central office for trying some things and and having conversations around what will work and what's what won't work. There is a whole-child approach and a heavy focus on social-emotional. They feel very supported by the community and know that the community is invested in the school. And so there's a lot of strength to build on here. We saw opportunities as, you know, we need to do a better job of helping teachers visit each other's classrooms and see what's happening across different schools and through the grade bands. And that's actually something we hear across all of our schools. Our fifth-grade teachers really want a chance to see sixth grade, our sixth-grade teachers want a chance to see fifth grade, eighth-grade teachers want a chance to see ninth grade, and ninth grade wants a chance to see eighth grade. When they change buildings, that's where we lose some of the continuity. So as as the feeder one principals were talking, that's something that we've heard from from most of our schools. So they see an opportunity for recruiting and retaining experienced teachers for their school, for their schools, and, you know, maybe even going as far as developing some kind of PDS program or, which is something we used to have, a professional development school where student teachers were embedded in the school. Coursework was taught both by university faculty as well as teachers in the school. So there was the theory of of educational theory matched with practitioner experience. So as they're talking about the theories of classroom management, teachers were presenting, and here's what that looks like in classrooms, and then sending them out to do classroom visits that looked like that. So that's a professional development school. They also talked about the the Urban Specialist Certificate that UTK once offered for for veteran teachers to go through and really think about what are the challenges specifically with urban education. That was a a five-year federal grant with a six-year rollover. So that hasn't been available in a while, but is there something along those lines that we could think of? Because they said that was a very valuable component of several years ago when that was a possibility. Aspirations, they would like a full advanced academic identity that they can talk about, kindergarten through 12th grade. So if you're at Sarah Moore Green, talking with a kindergarten parent, you can say to that parent, here's what it looks like over the next 12 years. And as you graduate from Austin East High School, here's what you can walk away with. And so we actually, that's something that we want for all of our our feeder patterns as well. So again, they'd like for us to continue to to think about the feeder pattern and create a culture where they can recruit, you know, other schools aren't recruiting away from their school. They have the programming and everything that that they need in order to hold the students in their district. And then results. You know, they're looking for a way to track their data day to day. So that's something that we're working to help them with. Benchmarking skills and gaps in student learning and successes in student learning. They're looking for better academic growth and achievement over time, specifically with regard to reading and math. And then they also would like some help making sure students learn how to self-regulate so that they can decrease the barriers to student success and then also reduce chronic absenteeism. So these were the the initial challenges that they brought to us and the successes and the strengths to build on. So we've got a rich starting place. We plan to continue to have meetings with them to understand what resources do we need to bring to the table. We understand we're horizon watchers, so we are able to see from 30,000 feet what what options are available, but the the people working in our schools are the ones with the insight. They know the context, they know what will work. So our job is to take this information that they've brought to us and then bring them some some options and some strategies and and give them the support they need to to implement for their students. So that's the direction that that these meetings are going, and we look forward to continuing this dialogue. Same with that, I will answer questions.
Ms. Bev?
I have a question, and I don't know that it's exactly in this, but when we talk about math and our retention of teachers, I was just curious, on middle and high school math teachers, are they able to teach, kind of like at the college level where you maybe just come in and teach one algebra class a semester, or do we not really do that? I just didn't know if that was a way to recruit people or if we even had the ability to do that.
I think I might let Scott Bolton answer that question. It's a licensure question, I believe. Is it, are you asking if they can teach one out of their licensure area?
No, more just kind of like when you look at a college level and you'll have a teacher come in and just teach one psychology class or semester and not have a full load. I didn't know if we had that kind of ability at the, obviously not in elementary school, but I didn't know in middle and high school if we have the ability for a teacher to come in and just teach one class or something like that.
That, that, that's a possibility, given that the person is adequately licensed. A lot of times when you're talking about with with math teachers, it's very difficult to find those that are adequately licensed. The standard math licensure will range from sixth grade all the way through 12th grade, which will range from concepts from pre-algebra all the way through calculus that they'll be licensed to teach. And we would love to have somebody who may want to step in and maybe teach a class here or teach a class there. But a lot of times, there's a lot of, to get the certification, you actually have to have a degree in the area. So you have a Bachelor of Arts in math and then take additional course hours above and beyond the required to get the certification. So it's very difficult to find people. We will find folks to do job embedded so that they're in the field, but the the practice, the the praxis exam is very difficult. So there's, there's, the change in the licensing at the state level, so.
So really, at the middle and high, I mean, really, for us, it's harder to teach than at a college level, it sounds like.
Absolutely is. There's, yeah, at the college level, if you have a certain number of hours in a master's level course, then you could qualify to teach that. That's not the case here. You have to go through the whole process.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. Can you say a little bit more about the scholarship, the approach to trying to gain math teachers and some more specificity around that?
Sure. And we are in the beginning stages of that, of that initiative, so I can tell you what I what I know about it right now, and then finance and HR can jump in if I get it wrong. But we are, what we've set aside in our ESER dollars is to identify And we are in the beginning stages of that initiative, so I can tell you what I know about it right now, and then finance and HR can jump in if I get it wrong. But we are, what we've set aside in our S R dollars is to identify, so two different ways that we can do this. One, we just had some December graduates who are licensed in math. I think it was three. So they all may get hired.
At UT?
I wouldn't be surprised if they are already hired. But if not, we have, in our S R dollars, we are able to hire them as apprentice and then assign them to an existing math teacher so that they can continue. And that existing math teacher would get a stipend for supporting that apprentice teacher. But that way, they are employed with us, and then if we have an opening, they get an extended time to learn Knox County schools and to learn to teach math with somebody who is both willing and able to help them to develop their skills. But then if we have an opening, we then would be able to move them into that open spot, and that would be the agreement with them when they come into the position. The other way that we could identify some math teachers, I've, we budgeted an S R to identify 17 of the tutors over the next three years who maybe are in an engineering degree or some other math-heavy degree where they're taking a lot of math classes. They're maybe two years into that program and deciding that they don't actually want to be an engineer, but now they have to go home and say, I don't want to be an engineer anymore, and I've invested all this money in being an engineer. But if we are able to say to them, we'll cover the last two years of going through school, if you then owe us three years of service for teaching math, identifying those who are really, who are doing a good job and seem to be really valuing the experience of teaching math. We think we may be able to identify some people who then might not otherwise have gone into a math program and do it maybe as a, I don't think with those, we could do it as a grow your own because they don't have a degree yet. So that's where we have.
And are you unearthing them primarily through relationships with like the departments that they're in? Like, how are we identifying these folks?
Yes, that would be through both the departments they're in, the principals, and our math department would, they will be doing a lot of.
Well, no, I mean, the potential people we might have to come in to take advantage of this at the university level who are in an engineering program, how are we?
Through the tutoring initiative. So as we are hiring people to be tutors for us, then we would be, because they don't have to be fully degreed to be a tutor. They can be a, they can be a student at the university, and so through building the relationships with them as tutors, and the university is helping us to identify tutors for different schools.
Scott, did you have something more to say?
Well, I was just going to add to that, and talking about, there's two pathways. So we're hoping if we get them early on in their college experience, then potentially they can go the traditional education pathway to be certified. However, if they're really close to completing their degree, we also have a job embedded placement opportunity for them where they could come in, be the teacher of record. We work with them, add support, and then they're completing their courses through the educator prep program. So those are two options that we would go for, for the purpose of licensure.
Thanks. And Ms. Jackson, my last question. You talked about you've not yet identified the schools for the math pilot. When's the goal to identify them?
So our math department is talking with schools next week. So we think we know, so in doing the data analysis, we have to have a methodology through federal budgets in order to identify schools. And so our methodology has identified two schools, and we're going out to talk with them to see if they are in a position to do that. We think they will be. They've been very, very engaged in the work we've been doing, but I don't, I don't want to identify them until the schools have said that it is a match for them.
Well, I really appreciate the work and the presentation and the, all the analysis that's gone on around assets and deficits and how we can work to our strengths and our capacities and, and especially in a targeted way like this. So thanks for bringing it.
Thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Shannon, thank you for bringing this. I know I've communicated with you a little bit about some concerns I've heard from teachers and parents around, so this would be kind of district curriculum topics, but I think one thing that you mentioned that I think may explain some of the concerns that I'm hearing, the literacy, you said that now it's changed and there's more knowledge of the world included in curriculum, and I think that's probably the difference that, does that make sense, that that's the difference that parents and teachers are seeing that are concerning? Because I think some of it has been with fourth, fifth, and into the middle grades that the topics are, in their view, too heavy for them. And so that's, so I think that's, does that, do you think that explains why I'm hearing these concerns?
It could. I think there's a lot that's new, and we always hear a lot of this when there is a new curriculum, I think. And that's where I think having our process is really important, so that when we hear a complaint, then they can tell us specifically what the complaint is, and we can look at that specific concern. And that's how we've been addressing, and our curriculum company has been great in elementary about making changes, and in fact, they've gotten in front of some of them. So I think part of it, yes, it's new, and one of the things that we discovered with one of the grade levels is that the teachers just didn't feel comfortable with the content because it was content they didn't know. So, you know, when, in thinking as an English teacher, I really know the things I have taught over time or the things I studied. And so that's a place where UT is helping us as well, because in some cases, it was just not having background knowledge in a particular, in a particular area, and just giving the teacher some background knowledge gave them more latitude to make the adjustments they needed to make for their students.
Such as, do you mean like if it was history that they're using in their English curriculum, something like that? Is that what you mean?
It could be, or, I mean, because there are history topics, there are science topics, there's art topics, there, you know, and so I did not, speaking for myself, I did not know a lot about the art topics until I had a curriculum, I was teaching advanced placement, and we had to do a comparison between an art piece and a poem, and I knew the poem really well. I didn't know a whole lot about the art piece. So, you know, having to really learn, how do I talk about this piece of art and compare it to this poem was something that I needed support doing. So we're finding some things like that in the curriculum too and looking for some partners and some professional development. But that, I mean, that's not to mitigate, there are some things where, you know, if people have found something concerning, then we have a process for them to bring that concern so that we can review it and make a decision. No curriculum is going to be perfect, and that's why we need really good teachers who understand how to make the adjustments to the curriculum.
Okay, and that's another thing that I've heard, that I've expressed to you, that some concern about whether teachers are able to be flexible in adjusting to what they feel like their students have mastered and moving on to new, to a new concept or whatever that is. You know, can you talk about the flexibility that you expect for teachers to be able to react to what's actually happening in their classroom?
Yes, and that's a lot of the work we're doing with Maynard and Sunnyview, is working with them and going through learning walks and helping us figure out how we have those conversations. So it's really about learning the intentionality behind the design. So, and I can talk about this with, the first time we implemented a curriculum like this was four years ago, and, you know, we said in year one, implement it the way it's written so that you understand how all the pieces come together. Because what we discovered as we were going through it and kind of making changes and adjustments, we didn't realize till we got to the assessment that a piece that we didn't think was important and we skipped it was a really important piece for the assessment that was coming up, and that was something that built over time. The ELA standards don't come to mastery until the end of a grade level. And so there's this constant spiraling and building throughout the year. So what we are, what we're trying to get people to see is that if they understand the design and can see not just the one lesson, but to look at the whole unit and then to look at how that unit fits into the scope of the year, then they're better able to make those changes. So if you understand the intention behind the design, then how you go about delivering it, there's a lot of different ways you can do that. And so we do want teachers to have the flexibility. We see it as both an art and a science, and the science is how the foundational skills instruction builds over time. The art to it is they know their students better than we do and know how to make those decisions.
Okay, thank you. And then another thing that I don't think I've, I don't think I've communicated this to you, Shannon, but in speaking to, regarding Algebra I, in speaking with some, one of the best algebra teachers that I know, the communication was students who, because I know that in math, you know, they, kids look at, learn a lot of different strategies and that kind of thing. However, when they get to Algebra I, the fact that they, if they don't know their math facts, the multiplication facts, then they're at a huge disadvantage, and then they can't actually learn algebra because they have to then teach math facts. So is that, if we're trying to boost Algebra I proficiency, is that a focus to, in addition to teaching strategies, let's have some memorization so that we know our math facts?
Yes, yes, and that is probably one of the biggest misunderstandings about our message. We definitely still believe in math facts and still teach math facts. I think that some students retain those math facts, you know, faster than others, and we need to continue to reinforce those math facts. I think what we would say is we're not going to put a brick on a student's head and not give them the conceptual knowledge if they are still struggling with those math facts because they need to continue moving through the curriculum. But that's where we come in and continue to support them. One of the initiatives that we've included in our, in our math plan, and I'm pointing at the slides, but I've actually taken it down, we have shifted one of our RTI coach positions to focus specifically on math intervention in the middle grades because that is a place where if they're getting the grade-level math in their grade-level math class, but then also in their intervention, building those math facts and continuing to build them in the background, that's really important. And so we're putting a stronger emphasis on that with our response to intervention and instruction. Some of it is figuring out, are they, do they really not know their math facts or are they just not fast? And so trying to determine that is, you know, takes some diagnosing.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I just think that that is a, kind of an issue that, all the way back to third grade, isn't it? When they learn them in third grade? I remember arguing with my daughter, she's trying to tell me strategies, and I'm like, you know what, that's great, but you have to know the facts, but then you do have to continually repeat them all the way through, otherwise they'll forget them. So it seems like that definitely, if we want our Algebra I proficiency to increase, that that really does need to be kind of a continual focus, even if they, even if we think they know them, that they're constantly reviewing them. So I'm glad that that's there, and I hope that, I hope that'll be even with every student, not just ones that really need intervention, that every student will be reviewing those, you know, all the way through the grades. Thank you.
Did I see another light? Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to piggyback a little bit on what Ms. Horn was talking about. I've also heard from concerned parents about some heavy subjects in the new curriculum, and I'm wondering if there's a way that we can internally audit maybe that curriculum before it gets to the teacher, so that way the teachers aren't having to make that judgment call, or we've looked at it before it gets to the teachers. I didn't know if that was a process that was in place.
We, thank you. Yes and no. So, yes, so for one thing, it's publicly posted. So it's on our, and we have PDFs of all of the, so let me back up. There's the official curriculum and the unofficial curriculum. So the official curriculum is what we as a district have adopted and purchased. That we have publicly posted, and through the state website, the state wrote to the publishers for permission, so that's why we're publishing it through them, so that we don't break copyright law. If there is more that parents want to see, they can come and schedule an appointment, and we will bring out all of the boxes of everything for people to see. So our teachers went through everything when they did the textbook adoption process. We have been, our team has been going through the curriculum since that adoption was made and really learning and identifying that curriculum. So in some of what I think both of you were emailing me about right before the end of the year, that was actually something we had polled. We, the publisher had reached out to us and said, we no longer think this is, this is coming up, we hadn't come to it yet, this is coming up, we no longer are including this in our curriculum because we don't think that, you know, it should be included at this time, and we'd like you to substitute it with these. They'd already made the changes to the digital, and the books for next year will have the new, the alternate text printed in them, but the alternate texts were already in the ones that had shipped earlier. So we are looking at that and reviewing it. I think, you know, this first year, we will really get into everything as we go through it. But I think, you know, when we talk about the knowledge of the world, we're looking at the, it's the topics that need to build over time. So, you know, we've always taught, you know, the Civil War in fifth grade, and then they see it again in eighth grade and again in, actually, eighth grade's the last time they see it. They pick up with Reconstruction in 11th grade. So the topics, you know, can get kind of heavy during that time, and they did before. But the, I think the difference now is it's a new curriculum with new texts that go along with it. So, and again, I'm happy to review, we have a process for reviewing any specific text that a, that somebody finds objectionable.
Do we have any other questions for Ms. Jackson? Thank you, and thank you for putting this together.
You're welcome.
I love seeing these presentations, they're really helpful.
Thank you.
So. So moving into discussion on our regular session agenda, board members, you received an email this afternoon, Superintendent Thomas and I approved the addition of a form agreement that will allow the district to enter into student teaching agreements with colleges and universities without having to return to the board for each individual school. And due to the time-sensitive nature and the start of the spring semester, we didn't want to wait until February to do this. I believe Mr. Bolton said we had a teacher actually needing this this month. So it has been added as Item 6C10 for your consideration. With that being said, on the consent agenda, are there, is there any discussion on Item 6A or B? Items in contract C and one or two?
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was, this is in reference to Item 2, the letter of support for the grant for KCDC. I was speaking to Mr. Thomas and also Mr. Oaks. So currently, that letter would just be signed by Mr. Thomas. I think it would be good if the letter also was signed by you as Board Chair, mainly because this is a multi-year grant, it's a six- to possibly 12-year deal for them. And, you know, Bob's already publicly made his retirement known, and I think it would be good to have the support of the board. I know you will sign it in terms of the board approving the letter, but I think you should also sign the letter, is my recommendation.
Ms. Ellen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at the fiscal note, it says no cost to Knox County schools. Could we get some clarification on the costs that are in the letter?
So, Mr. Oaks?
What we're laying out in the letter and agreeing in the letter does not have a direct cost as a result of what we're putting in the letter. The items that we've identified in the letter where we're providing support are areas that the board has already approved and that we were already taking action on. For example, the construction of Lonsdale Elementary School and the LED upgrade system-wide that we've got for all of our lighting in all of our buildings.
Thank you.
So any other discussion? Yes.
This isn't necessarily the letter per se, but when we had the discussion, when they came and talked, and I believe this is what they talked about, it seemed like there was a lot of discussion about the growth that would go on there and the population growth and student growth over there. Are we starting to look at sort of school needs that are going to be needed over there in the future of the growth of population there?
Yes, ma'am, and that's something that we're looking at as we're preparing next year's capital plan and to look down the road and the, you know, as to how we will serve those students in that area and, you know, and both with particular attention to Beaumont Elementary School. And, you know, and both with particular attention to Beaumont Elementary School especially.
That, great. I just, with them coming to us, and I, I just want us to be as proactive as possible instead of reactive to what sounds like is going to happen over there.
Yes, ma'am. And as, as we look at it, you know, the, you know, in the short run, this is a six-year project. You know, if, if they don't get the grant, then it's, it's a longer-term project. So it's, it's not something that, you know, we've, you know, got to address in next year or the next year's capital plan. But we need to look at it. And, and I, you know, Lonsdale Elementary Schools, not Lonsdale, Beaumont's enrollment right now is right about 600. And, you know, we would expect across 12 grades for this project to bring in, you know, 200 to 300 students across 12 grades. So half of that number is, would be, you know, roughly speaking, elementary grades. So we, we would expect that there would be something there. And, 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 you know, what we'll be looking at to make a recommendation on the board, probably not for FY '23, but, you know, as, you know, somewhere down, down the road in the FY '25, '26 timeframe, how to address that with, with the facilities that we've got or, or if we're going to need a new facility.
Any discussion on Items 3 or 4? 5 or 6? 7 or 8? 9 or 10? Moving on to Board Policies. Any discussion on 7A or B? C or D? E or F? Oh, Ms. Owen, I'm sorry.
E.
E, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a packet somewhere at your seat with the, maybe I don't have it, a learning loss is what it says on the top. This is from the state. And if you'll turn over and take a look at the very back page, number 11, I would like to consider adding this language to Policy I340 so that we could have some clarification on exactly what is expected there. I know we've gotten several emails from parents who have been concerned about special circumstances and special needs students. And the, the clarification that they are looking for is actually covered in the Department of Education's guidance. So I think including this language under 11 would be helpful. So I'll, I'll make that motion Wednesday.
So any discussion on F? Or Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was debating whether or not to bring this up under policy labeled E or when we talk about the legislative agenda. But TSBA, over the holidays, sent out to all of us some draft resolutions that you could use if you wanted to pair those with different potential legislative agendas. And one of them has to do with this policy around third grade retention. It's something that, depending on how the discussion maybe goes later, but again, it ties into this policy too. It, it might be something for the board to consider if we feel strongly about including, or given, asking for the opportunity for us to include district-level data in making that decision and that determination is to possibly look at a draft resolution like TSBA to potentially send and approve.
So Item F or G? H or I? J or K? L or M? N or O? P or Q? R or S? T or U? V or W? X, Y, or Z? Starting the alphabet over again, as we discussed at the last meeting. Item AA or BB? CC or DD? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's just fun to say AA and BB and all that stuff, isn't it? We don't get a lot to do that a lot. So this question's around DD. As I was reading back through some of these with a little bit different lens, over the holidays, I was reading through, I think I mentioned in the past in these meetings that some of my kids have 504s. And recently, we've gone through the process of potentially getting an IEP for our son. And so I was reading through that very long report from that. And so I was kind of reading through some of this with a different lens. On that policy J552, on line 22 on the first page, special education data seems to be a very big area. And I'm curious, I know Mr. Myers is not here tonight. I'm, I'm curious if anybody can speak to what kind of official special education data and documentation do we keep and retain for the purpose of this policy? Because again, I just, I've been weeding through a lot of it with my family and I'm trying to figure out what, what might be official. It's not a personal question. I'm just trying to figure out what's included in that broad category.
Mr. DePuy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson, I can start. John Roswick may want to jump in too. But, I mean, this policy basically refers to the fact that any type of special education data that is individualized is, is an educational record for that particular student and must be protected unless there's some type of an exception to disclose that data. Now, you know, a lot of times there might be, you know, a school may need to share between another school or something like that. But, but certainly that's, that's very sensitive data that, that would not be released without a very good reason due to the policy.
But like you just mentioned, school to school, internally, it could within the system.
Sure, absolutely.
Dr. Roswick, is there anything you wanted to add? I'm just, again, it was more about what types of special education data is included in that. And if it's everything that we have, that's fine. But if there's something that would not be included in that, I'd be interested in that.
It would typically be everything that's in there. Students have a separate file if they have an IEP that, a CCR is what we call it, that travels with that student as they move from school to school and their, and their grade level transitions or anything else. And that can include information, a lot of it now is electronic and kept in like an easy IEP where they have that in order to be able to process that through. So that, that does follow a student through their, till graduation. And then there's a set time, we keep those as well, you know, post that time. So it pretty much would be, my understanding, everything that would be in that file that was discussed in IEP or those sorts of things that were there.
Thank you.
So any more discussion on policies? So moving on to grants, Items A, A or B? C or D? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just a technical question related to C. Well, it's really more about an approach. So I know that the East Tennessee Foundation Grant, the Youth Endowment Fund, is funding $6,000 to Dogwood Elementary for these calming corners. I'm just curious if we're seeing more implementation of that approach across more elementary schools? Or is it something that we're seeing just in isolated situations? I don't know who can speak to that. Just, I know, I mean, in terms of who's here. Do we have a sense of whether or not calming corners are being used in a lot of different elementary schools or?
I can say just anecdotally, I'm seeing more of them.
Seeing more of them, okay.
Dr. Roswick?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that is I would say that we, we don't have, you know, formal budget items for like a rollout of X many and so many years. So most of them, I think you'll see are funded this way through grants that, that schools will obtain. But I would say the practice of doing that and setting up spaces for that is, you know, to the extent schools have the space to be able to do that, I think is something that they're finding. I don't know that we have data on it to see, you know, this, this child doesn't, doesn't have a repeat of another offense. But I think most of the principals, kind of again to Ms. Owen's point, anecdotally will say, having that space and that option for a student during those times is beneficial.
Okay. I'm not going to ask Janice more about it too. I wasn't sure if she'd be here tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Pam?
I mean, this is just anecdotally, but one of the schools that I've visited recently that was able to, with some construction, do it, was just talking about having to not send kids home. That they had the ability to keep them at school, get them calmed at school, and how beneficial they found it. I mean, it was really an interesting conversation. We talked a long time about it when I went to visit one of my schools. So I thought it was very interesting because it was kind of my first introduction to it.
Yeah, just in response to that, I mean, so some of the trauma-responsive work that I've been a part of, I mean, one of the, kind of that core idea, and I think Ms. Jackson mentioned it earlier, or somebody did in this meeting, just the, the ability to help a student self-regulate, how important that is before you can begin to even relate or to reason with them, which is where the academic side comes in. So just curious, as, as we're trying to help students do more of that self-regulation, you know, what kind of practices are we seeing to be most beneficial? And if it's calming corners or other interventions that we're doing, so.
So any discussion on Item D? Moving on to Contracts, 9A or B? C or D? And regular agenda items, 10A? And 10B, and legislative priorities? I just want to start this conversation by thanking Ms. Owen for the document she sent that was shared with board members. And also Superintendent Thomas and his team sent board members some of their items they would like to see us consider just before break. I will say, and maybe Mr. Thomas or Mr. McPherson, you can speak to this. On December 16th, we went to a, I guess it was part of the BEP listening tour for superintendents, and Mayor Jacobs was there. And we had a representative from County Commission and myself and Mr. McPherson and those teams from various counties. And we did hear a lot, I mean, my big takeaway from that meeting was that whatever's happening with the BEP formula is probably going to happen this legislative session. So I had asked, you know, the superintendent and, you know, if he had items that were of special concern to him for us to consider. So, and I do appreciate the work you all put in to providing that as well. Did you want to speak to that or?
Just a concern, of course, I think last year, I know the, the, the term "hold harmless", I think has been sort of changed for this coming year. And that's what we used last year, I guess, in the dialogue. And, and I think the importance around that is when we, when we look at what held harmless meant for us this year, we would have lost $6 million, I believe it was, Ron, what it is, in terms of, of funding, had we not been held harmless, of BEP funding. So, so I guess the concern is that just with the new formula, i- if that's implemented this year, or if, whenever we do get the, start getting funding estimates from the state, what we would like to see is that we, because we still have a, a decrease in enrollment, I think maybe a couple of thousand students from where we were pre-COVID. So, and we've added personnel because again, taking, looking at mental supports, emotional, social, all the kinds of supports for kids. We've, we've, we've used money to hire some additional folks. So, you know, we don't want to see a reduction in funding. We'd like to see an increase, actually. And, and we know with our experience, growth has been really good for us this year so far with sales taxes. And, and I think that's occurring across the state too. So we just want to be sure that, that whatever the funding mechanism is, we don't lose funds. And if we can make sure that we get growth based on, on the funds. Ron brought up a real good point this morning as we were talking, you know, what, what would it look like? I think we, it's important to ask, when this new formula is put into place, what is the difference between what we would have gotten had the formula not changed? As, in comparison to what we're getting with the formula change? Because I think that's, you know, that, that's going to tell us a lot right there. So we just felt like it was important that the legislators, we have a conversation with them as they're talking about this to make sure that funding is, you know, we, we continue to get increases and get growth and, and that we don't actually move backwards, you know, with this, which I don't think the intent is for that to happen. But again, I think we need to, need to make sure on the front end, we're asking the right questions about funding and the formula. And Ron can talk, if I've left out anything?
So we're good? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I included that language in the final version that I submitted as well for consideration. The, the concern I would have is that when our legislators talked about the "hold harmless" language, I think those two words may, may be concerning for them because they were so adamant that, that they would not do that twice. So that, that is a concern to me, just that, just really those two words. However, in the most recent conversations that I have seen with Commissioner Swin giving updates to the governor, there was a lot of discussion about not reducing current funding. So I think if there's some way to say "hold harmless" and not reduce current funding, I think that will go a lot further with our legislators because it would be more, more along the lines of continuing current funding in this new formula instead of looking so directly at ABM.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that's a really good point, Ms. Owen. And, and, and Mr. Thomas touched on this too. I would be surprised if we received less, less funding than we did this year due to such significant growth. What, what concerns me though is the, the point that, that Mr. Thomas made that we were talking about just this morning, that we could actually see an increase in dollars, which would actually align with what Ms. Swin said. But does that mean that we would have gotten the same amount of increase under the BEP formula or more? The concern I have is, once the new funding model comes into place, and if the state were to say, "See, we, we told you nobody would get hurt", but there is that unknown factor about, well, what did the formula really do for Knox County schools? And I think it's, I would love to see that once this new formula takes into, or becomes effective, how that compares with what the formula or the dollars would have been generated under the old or the existing model. So I don't, you know, I don't know how the board might want to approach that dynamic if, if, they totally defer to the board on this. If the board were to say, you know, we, we would oppose any type of funding structure that would result in less funding, not just less funding, but less funding than what the districts otherwise would have received under the BEP formula. You know, that's, that's something potentially to, to consider, but.
I think that would be useful language.
Ms. Pam?
Yeah, this is on both Ms. Owen's copy and the other copy. It was just some language clarifications for me. On both of them, there, and I am terrible with acronyms. And I'm thinking if, I don't know what an acronym means. I can pretty much probably assure you our legislators don't either. But TANF, what is that? Okay. And maybe I, I literally am the worst at acronyms. But I think anytime we use an acronym, we've got to put in parentheses what it is. So that would be my other thing. And then this is my other thing, is on support increased funding. And on both of these, we bullet point where we want it to be. I really think we need to put what it's currently funded at because I think when we have these conversations, you know, if it's, you know, like on a school nurse position, we're saying we want it one nurse per 750 students. Well, if it's 775 students currently, then that's not a big difference. We all know that it's a huge difference. So I think, I think for all those bullet points where we want to have a tied better ratio, I think if we could put what our current funding is, I think that would be very helpful in our conversations because it would just already be there for us to talk about. But I think too, it's kind of shocking when you see what it currently is compared to what it should be. So I, I, I'm totally fine with really what the topics are. I think that would just help kind of highlight some of these problems that we know exist, but really bring them to a floor. That would be kind of the only thing I'd ask for.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of things. One, I agree with Ms. Owen. I think the-
the, the hold harmless language needs definitely to change. I think there's just absolutely no question. I totally agree with the sentiment, but I think that, that language is not going to win us any points. So I think that, that definitely needs to change. And Ron, do we expect the new funding model to be in place for the next fiscal year? Do we know that for sure? Or is that the expectation?
That's the speculation, I would, I would phrase it that way, that based on what we heard from the state officials a couple of weeks ago, that's the intent. One thing I think we can absolutely say that BEP is going to be dead at some point, whether it's this year or next, there's just not going back to that. One thing, too, I might add that, what, the point that Ms. Bab made, which I think is a good, a good point, where that sometimes gets a little tricky, is the BEP formula may say, we get funded, I'm making this up, we get, we get funded one position for every, pick a category, 500 students.
Like 2,000 nurses, yeah.
Right. But there's this, there's this fiscal capacity index that really throws that askew. Because the BEP formula, in the formula itself, it may say you're funded on one for every 500 kids. When you apply that ratio, that factor, though, when, when, when it, you run those numbers, and then the, the local contribution comes into play that's required, you're, instead of being funded one for 500 in real dollars, you're actually funded one for like maybe seven or 800, right? Because the real dollars are totally different than what the formula says. So the formula is maybe, you're, you may get a position based on, okay, for every 500 kids, I get a position. But then that position is reduced in real dollars based on the fiscal capacity.
Okay. So I agree with Ms. Bab that it would be nice to see those, because I know like on last year's copy, I went back in and wrote it in so that I have it there. So if we were going to put it on there, could it, could it say for Knox County, so that it's specific to us?
We could clarify. Yeah, we, we could, we could clarify in some ways. We could say something like per the, per the, per the formula, and then in real, equals in real doll, in real dollars.
Or you could even do an asterisk at the bottom. And I, and just a couple of formatting things, you know, the, the version that we used last year had those things that we need additional funding, like school nurses, guidance counselors, they were just in bold. I think it would be nice to maybe see those in bold. I just think it's, we need, that's, those numbers are so important. I think that if we can just make it look a little cleaner on what those numbers are, I think it would be, is that, do you agree with that, Ms. Owen?
There's a yellow folder that you have, that has a copy there that may be helpful.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I think just to, so Ms. Owen, I had a question. Is yours, so what you have, is it different than what the one that looks like this for the, that the district has put out?
Yes, it's in the yellow folder.
Okay. But what about the, I mean, is it, is there something in particular? I know, I see one difference. I see yours includes the school vouchers. Is there, is it pretty much the same?
It's basically the same and follows the format that we have followed for several years and has the same language. I went back to ensure that all of those things that we have discussed over several years were worded the way we intended them to be worded.
Okay.
And there, for clarification, in that folder, you also have, going back to 2016, all of our legislative priorities. You have TSBA's legislative priorities for about the last four years, and then you have legislative priorities from TOS as well, so that you can compare those.
Thank you so much for putting that together. That's very helpful. And then I just had one other content question. Under the, the one the district has prepared, it says, under increased funding, it says, students with disabilities and English language learners. Is there a way that we can make that more specific? Or should it be more specific? Maybe it shouldn't, but it's on, on the district copy under supports increased funding four. So it's, there's school nurses, guidance counselors, social workers, and then it just says students with disabilities and English language learners. I mean, there may not be a way to make it more specific. It just seems kind of, like the others are so specific, but then that one just kind of seems like it's out there. So is there a way to make that more specific? And what, you know, what would that be? Maybe we can ask Ron to look at that and come back to us if there's something on that one. Yeah, like what do we need, like what's it for exactly? So.
And just, just to be clear, again, this is just something I had asked the superintendent if he could share with us, just because they're the ones that have to.
Oh, yeah. It's very helpful.
Make sure that we're in compliance.
Absolutely. And I appreciate the work that you guys have done on this. Absolutely. It's really helpful. So those were, that's really, that was really the biggest question that I had, was really just, you know, can that be more specific? So thank you so much for the work that went into that.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reiterate what we've already mentioned about the whole harmless. I was in the legislative workshop at the TSBA convention, and legislators in that room said, hey, that, that's not going to fly. So I think we definitely need to move away from that language. Again, I think the intent is right. I agree with, with Ms. Bab said. And I think using, like you said, asterisk and in real dollars, I think is, is a way to get at that. I want something that's not been mentioned is in the, in Bob's version of it, in the improved funding, I think it actually helps the, the language around based on the recommendations of BEP, National Association of Nurses, kind of giving a little bit of credence to, hey, here's some entities that say this is what we need to kind of shoot for. I think that's missing in Ms. Owen's version. So I think adding that would be helpful in it. I do agree with bolding it, and I also think there's a couple places maybe in Bob's version that we could pull out some sub bullets to make it easier to find and to read. But I actually like the formatting of the district's version, because I like that it's branded to Knox County schools. It doesn't seem like it's just, it, it, the, the version that we've been using for a while seems like it could come from any district, even though I know it says Knox County at the top. I like that it's kind of branded to Knox County. It does get longer that way. I mean, it's now a front and back instead of just a front, but I do like the branding. And, and also notice that the one thing that was missing is, Ms. Warren pointed out with school vouchers, and I do think we should add that in, especially because I think one of the big concerns that I've heard, and it was mentioned at TSBA from a lot of different people, is that potentially this rework of the BEP is a, is a way to get to a place where it makes vouchers easier. So I think if there's any year to include that, again, that the board would have to approve it, that we want to take a strong stance against that, this would be a year as they're looking at the BEP formula, so.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at the issue of branding, I would consider this an official document. And an official document from us should have the seal on it rather than the logo. So I think if we're going to, if we're going to follow those, those rules, then we would want to have an official seal on it.
Ms. Bab?
Ms. Henderson, do you want to speak to your addition?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bab. So I did have one addition. I do like what the district put together, so thank you so much for your work on that. And I did have one addition to the district's version, is asking the state to fund the SRO program. The state did pass a bill which funds the SROs, but Knox County already had their SRO program in place. Therefore, we pay for our SRO programs when other schools have them funded by the state. And so I would just like to work with the state to see that funded. That way we can open up our funds to hopefully use that money for retaining and for raises for our SROs.
Ms. Bab?
I guess, I guess you informed me about something I wasn't aware of. So is that, if we ask for this, is it, is it specific for just Knox County? So really, this is just a Knox County issue that we need to talk about that sounds like?
Yeah, it's something we, I would like to bring up with the state. Since we already had our program implemented, we're still paying for the SROs, where when they were, the schools that have newer programs, the state is funding those SROs. So I think that across the board, the state should be funding the SROs.
Superintendent, Mr. McPherson, correct me if I'm wrong, I do think that was brought up in that meeting that we were in, too, from other districts asking, wanting the state to fund those as well. So that's probably going to be coming up from other districts as well. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be clear, Ms. Henderson, because I know we've talked about this a lot in the last year. Do you, are you referring to SROs with KPD and KC SO, or are you talking about SSOs? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, would it be the SSOs? Am I having that? Okay.
SSOs are our employees.
Are the ones that we are funding. So the ones that we are funding. So yes, I apologize.
The reason I ask is because KC SO and KPD actually fund our SROs. We don't fund them at all internally.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the SSOs that we employ.
Yes, that we employ and fund. Yes.
Okay. And so because the other part of your piece was to put an SSO in each school, which currently we have an SSO in each school. So your issue is really more around funding than is about increasing the body of SSOs.
Yeah, that way that the funding is just equal.
Right. Because currently, Ron, there's no funding in the BEP for SSOs, SROs. But you're saying there's a separate law that?
That's correct.
So if there's a separate law that we can take advantage of, is this really a local issue we got to work through about how to take advantage of it if the funding's already
Well, it should probably be for every district, really.
Well, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Does the law provide funding for any district to tap into for this, and we just haven't taken advantage? Okay. So what's the law specifically do for funding then?
So in 2019, the state passed a law that any school district that doesn't have that program.
Oh, that doesn't have it. Oh, okay. I got you.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
That's the caveat.
So I would just like to open up a conversation with them, so that way we can have a level playing field, and it would open up funding for us to use that money elsewhere, to retain, to recruit, to provide raises.
I think if we, I think if we, I think it's great to have the state fund more of what we're already doing. I think to be able to speak about it easier, it'd be great to know, like, what, where does that funding come from, since it's not the BEP, like, that law? Just some technical things around it. I mean, your, your suggestion was pretty brief, so I think if, if we want to add it to the legislative agenda, you know, just getting some technical things around it would be great. So, yeah.
And there, again, referring back to that meeting, it sounds like that might be part of the push to get that actually put into the BEP, right? The new formula. So that might be where we need to. Yeah. Right.
So maybe we include it in the, sorry, my screen just went dark, in the improved funding section of this as an additional bullet, just like nurses and all that. But be real, some people, legislators are going to read that and be like, oh, well, you already have access to that, you're not taking advantage of it. So I think we got to be real clear about opening up to districts who are already had an SSO program.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify, I believe the law that was passed in 2019 is a grant program. When they started looking at that law, the cost was huge for all counties. And so it, it didn't get very far. It didn't get much past that, yes, it didn't get past the fiscal limit. And it's, anyone who had school security at that time is not covered. So if any school was already paying for school security officers, they were not eligible for that grant. So it's not just Knox County, it's statewide. Anyone who was not, anyone who was already paying for a school security officer, not eligible for the grant. It was only for people who had no officers at all.
Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this because I think that, and I appreciate the clarification, Ms. Owen also, but I think as we're looking at funding, it's, that's a huge deficit. So that, that absolutely needs to be part of the equation. So thank you for bringing that.
Mr. Watson?
Mr. Oaks or Mr. McPherson, can you, does, what's the total budget that we have right now for SSOs? What are we paying for our SSO program? In round numbers. I mean, I don't need it to be exact, but.
In, in round numbers, as best I recall, and I haven't looked at it for, for a number of months. We're, we're somewhere between personnel and equipment and everything else we put together, between five and six million dollars a year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
I think we need to be careful in the language, that funding that does not take away from any other educational areas. So looking at the language there, I would take great care.
Okay. So any other discussion on legislative priorities? Mr. Watson?
Just a technical one. I mean, I think we're going to be asked to vote on this on Wednesday. So what's the plan from this meeting in terms of what will happen with what we just did?
I guess either someone brings a new document for consideration and makes a motion on that, or we can just go item by item.
I wonder if it would be, well, I wonder if it would be good to give some direction to either, I mean, I know Ms. Owen's already made a lot of effort in this, or somebody in the district to draft basically what we think we've discussed tonight, so we can have something to vote on. I, I wouldn't want both of them to go back to work again, and, does that make sense what I'm asking?
So Superintendent Thomas, do you have any thoughts on that?
Based on what I've heard, and I appreciate Ms. Owen preparing her document, and also with the input that we've gotten tonight, what if we just work with Ms. Owen on what we've talked about? If that's okay, we'll put together something based on the conversation, try to get that out tomorrow, I guess, Tuesday. I don't know that we can have all the, the funding pieces ready for Wednesday, but we'll work, we'll work on that, so that we get the information that Ms. Bab talked about. So, but the main thing was we'll get the language in the format that we've heard tonight, I think, and have something for you to vote on. That's acceptable.
Ms. Owen, does that sound good?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So item 10C, which is the retainer agreement with Millsat's gallon government relations for provisions of governmental consulting services. Mr. Watson? Or Ms. Bab? Sorry.
Yeah, I guess I just have a question about how this works. Since it's four LEAs that are together on this, is it just assumed we're all going to do it? Is there ever a discussion between like the four school board chairs of these? I mean, that's where it's, I'm like, how do we go? I mean, and it's not like that I'm unhappy with them, but it seems like it's just, it seems like it should be a discussion between the four LEAs. Are they happy? And I don't know how you do that, but it, I just, this is obviously in place way before my time, and I just kind of am trying to figure out the process on, is it just automatic and we individually all vote on it, but we don't, all four groups talk about it together? So does, if anybody's got any knowledge, I would love that.
I believe the way it's done, has been done in the past, is that this is their organization, and we may choose to be a part of it, or choose not to be a part of it. So I don't think we've ever discussed it as that group of four, as far as I know. So we can each, each choose to sign on or not.
And, and this is not talking in any way about the particular organization, whether we think they're good or not. But say we, we all thought they were terrible, there's never anybody, it doesn't seem like there's any ever discussion on whether people are happy with their services or not, which seems kind of peculiar when you're spending a pretty good amount of money. And these people are doing a very good job to us. I guess I'm just questioning the process a little bit, or really trying to understand our process on keeping them hired. And once again, this is not a up or down on their work itself. It's just, it doesn't seem like we actually ever discuss as a whole, because it's like we just have these, I, I've never heard of a group where you just kind of never have a say on whether you keep hiring them or not.
Well, we do have a say. We have a say whether we, whether we are happy with them. And then if we're not happy with them, I think we need to express that to them.
But it seems like, I mean, and maybe this is maybe me not understanding, it seems like there's four school districts all hiring them together. It seems like at some point, those four school districts should have a conversation of, are we hiring the right group? And once again, this is not making to do with yes or no on this particular group, but, because if we didn't like it, then all of a sudden we're out. But really, it's the four groups together that really need to be making that decision, but that doesn't ever sound like those four groups ever talk to each other.
I'm not, I'm not sure how that could.
I mean, originally, wasn't it the superintendent?
I mean, originally, wasn't it the superintendent's that? Mr. Duport, do you have some insight?
Sure, I can, I mean, such a meeting could occur. It'd have to be open to the public, have to be noticed, and that would be, could be logistic, we'd have issues as well. So, but, but it could occur. I mean, it would be...
It's kind of weird that we can never talk about whether we are happy. We can talk about it ourselves, but that doesn't really represent the groups of four that are hiring them. To me, the whole point is, and even, do we ever talk about this fifth group that is kind of coming along? Maybe you have some insight.
And the reason it's probably hasn't occurred since it was formed is because that, I mean, there would be a lot of difficulty in maybe putting something like that together.
Once again, our lovely sunshine.
I don't know who was first here. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, just in direct response to that, I have, I have an idea. I had a conversation, and really this conversation stemmed from another board member conversation that I had with a board member from Rutherford County. Yeah, okay. Because you know, Rutherford now, their, their population is, is actually higher than Hamilton County, I believe. So, so she was just asking, do, you know, do you large districts ever get together and just have conversations that are specific to large districts? And I said, no, but I think that's a fantastic idea. So what I think that we ought to do, I think that maybe at TSBA, because that would be a time that we could notice it, but maybe at TSBA, we schedule a meeting that's not with Millsaps and Gallon, that's just with the large school districts to have conversation about this topic, also just other topics that are pertinent to large school districts. Because, and that also, and we could, as far as that goes, we may want, and I think TSBA would be very open to it because TSBA is currently trying to fill in the gaps with the things that NSBA used to do and Cube used to do. So they're working on kind of initiatives like that anyway. So this could be a place that we ask TSBA to facilitate a meeting with the large, the five large school districts, in addition to our meeting with Millsaps-Gallon, that we can just talk about this. And Rutherford County, I think they're in, they would probably be interested, or they may be. I don't think we talked about that. But, but just, just topics that, you know, are, are relative just to us.
I mean, I'm going to be off the school board by the time we have a next TSBA, but I really think that's a great idea because our lobbying organization could be one of those conversations. Because I think if we're really never having that group, and Rutherford to me is the perfect example of they're now really number four, but because they've grown and nobody ever has this conversation, they're getting left out. So I would encourage that happening. I think that's a great idea.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I'm going to be real honest. I'm going to vote no against this because it's a lot of money. I don't see the value in this group. I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. I feel like they're ineffective. And how many groups we get to belong to? So I'm just going to be voting no on this.
Ms. Babes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To answer your question, Ms. Bab, I think the last conversation about this or discussion by the board was in 2015 when there were three new board members elected. And Board Member Terry Hill raised the very same question you raised tonight. And there was a lot of discussion on it. And I don't think there's been a lot since then. So I think the consensus at that time was to go ahead and continue with this group. But there was that discussion and quite in depth about what services they provided and why. And could we find another group that would, not anything reflective, like you said, of their services? But is that the financial part of it in line? Could we find another group? But anyway, so you could go back and look at that if you want to, but I think that was the last time, was 2015. And several of us did not understand where this came from, so.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As best I recall, Ms. Bab, when it first got started, it was, there was a little discussion around the price tag. But it was one of those things, well, they're going to be a really strong lobbying arm for us if we put the four together, you know, we can be, they're strength in numbers. And then the second year, I think, I think it was the second year, it may have been the, the next year after that, there began to be some questions raised by board members, myself being one of them, as to what exactly do they do? Well, they never did to the people that were on the board here who asked the questions. They never did answer that to their satisfaction, I don't believe. Now, there were a couple of people that thought, you know, it's one of those things, the intention is good, but what do we actually get out of it? And we weren't getting anything. But they, they lobbied us really hard about trying to convince us that, you know, we're going to do this, we'll do that. They brought in some things that were kind of gray as to whether they had any role played in them and that sort of stuff. And at the time, as best I recall, there were only two or three board members that questioned that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but... And, you know, once, once we saw that it was going to fly, why, you know, why repeat yourself until the board changes? It just never has gotten brought up. But I, I mean, if you want to have a meeting, what are they going to do to you if you said that we're going to have a meeting at one of our schools on such and such a date? Anybody wants to come, I'll summon somebody to come from each of the schools. Would that be illegal, Mr. Duport?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. McMillan. You know, the only, the only time it becomes illegal is when you have two or more members of this board. So...
Well, what if every board was there? I mean, every board member?
Well, then, as long as you notice it, I mean, you can have that meeting, sure. You know?
Just notice it, forget about it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean...
You know, who cares?
And, and as, as Ms. Horn was, was stating, I mean, you all could talk individually to other board members from other counties. That's, that's, that's not a problem at all individually. But if you want to have a big group meeting with, with other boards and including yourselves, then yeah, it would, it would just need to be public notice. But if it is, and you're able to put that together, so be it.
If somebody wants to do it, like spring of the year, one of our schools, I, you know, I would, I would say that, you know...
I think it's hard to get, I do think students have the idea, because everybody's already at the FBA. So I think if we were intentional about it, we'd all... I think, I think that was a good way of doing it. I think it's intentional to do bring everybody together and to have these kinds of discussions.
I was just trying to find something before you left, Ms. Bab, to see...
I think realistically, realistically, we're about to get the budgets and that sort of thing. Politically, are we going to get really everybody from five districts together? I think it's going to be hard to do at this time, like we've got super first going on. I just would like us thinking about this. Instead of just this comes up and it's like, it's just an automatic mode and nobody's really ever given any thought. And whether we do want to do it, don't want to do it, or we want to ask, we want to do our people's services, things like that. But I think that's got to be bigger discussion than just our school board. But then we're working in conjunction with three other school boards.
And I believe Class does have a set of bylaws that Ms. Cottney will send to board members to, to, to look at those prior to Wednesday's meeting. So, Mr. Watson? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. McMillan.
I, I want to back up just a minute and ask a question. On the legislative priorities, are we going to vote on those collectively? Or if you disagree with one or two or whatever, you just vote no?
Collectively, would probably be best. And I do think it, personally, I think it's counterproductive when we are not all in agreement on them because, you know, when you take that to the, you know, your representatives, they're, they're going to know.
Do you really think they're going to pay that much attention?
Well, they might, I don't know. You, you've been doing this longer than I have, will they?
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bab, I really appreciate you bringing it up because something like that certainly shouldn't be a rubber stamp. And I agree with Ms. Horn. I mean, I, we were all together, meeting with them in, at TSBA. And I think there's a lot of benefit to that type of meeting and certainly extending that and being able to talk about more issues outside of, you know, them being present. I mean, to me, it's a natural place to do it and it's already publicly noticed and it takes care of all those issues. I will point out, I didn't realize this until that meeting, that they've not increased their fees since the agreement started. So I don't know how long the agreement's been in effect, but I mean, typically what you would see, I think, in agreements like this is an increase year over year. So I don't know what's caused them or motivated them to do that. I did notice that the particular letter that we have is actually addressed to Dr. Battle at Metro Nashville, which I know there's places for us to sign below, I mean, for Ms. Christie to sign. But I'm wondering in the history of it, did it originate within Metro Nashville? Is that why the letter's addressed there or?
I can answer that. Yeah, I believe it has to do with the bylaws and who is chair at this time. And so it has passed, it has passed from Nash, from Memphis to Nashville this year.
Okay.
So it would be because that would be the chair of the organization at this point.
Yeah, thank you. And then also to Ms. Henderson's point, I don't know how you measure the effectiveness of lobbying. I'm sure there's ways you can do that. And to add a component into whatever contract we have them, have with them about providing metrics that speak to their success, I think is something we need to add if it's not already part of it. And again, I don't know all the mechanics of how to measure the effectiveness of lobbying, but I'm sure people have come up with ways to do it, so.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to share my experience with Class because I meet with them every week throughout January until the session ends. Every week, we have a Zoom call. And if someone would like to trade out with me so that you can experience that call, so that you see what they go over, Renee Kelly and I are on that call every Friday morning. They will go over everything that is coming up in session for the week to be sure that if we have concerns that they need to address with our legislators, that they can address those. So whatever is on, on the calendar for the week, they will go over any concerns that we have, if there's something that hasn't been noticed or whatever. And then they can discuss it with those legislators. The meetings that they have with us, of course, at TSBA to go over those things as well. A couple of years ago, oh, I also, I believe we approve this contract actually every year because I, I think, I remember having this discussion every year. A couple of years ago, Ben with TSBA put together a presentation for us that showed all of the lobbying organizations that our legislators are hearing from. They have, if, if you walk into a, an education committee meeting, you are going to see suits of lobbyists. The room will be full of lobbyists. And those lobbyists are often organizations who are in the business of taking funds from public schools. There are not a lot of lobbyists for public schools. Memphis has their own. Nashville usually has a person who goes, but they're not a lobbyist. And our large districts have Millsaps-Gallon. And we have our TSBA folks who go. And that's all we have. So for us to, to have no one speaking on our behalf is very concerning. I'm very sure that we couldn't hire a single lobbyist for this amount. The relationship that they have with other lobbyists is very good. And what I have seen is the relationship that they have with our legislators is also very good. It's not, it's not the kind of confrontational relationship I have with them. They, they get along very, very well and share concerns with them in a way that, that is heard, let's say it that way. My, my experience has been that anytime I am in Nashville, anytime I'm there for meetings, both Robert and Elizabeth are there. And they are both there because they are covering different meetings and talking to everyone. And I've never, ever been there that I haven't run into them there. So the work that they are doing, I think, is very consistent and very necessary. If we were going to look at any other firm, I would feel very concerned to, to stop that relationship right now as the legislative session is beginning. I think that's something that would need to be considered at a very different time. Thank you.
Ms. Bab?
Yeah, I guess I would just like a little bit more information from Ms. Henderson about, about your not wanting to vote on this. Is, and I guess what I'm wondering is, do you feel like we don't need a lobbyist? Do you think we not, do not need to be part of Class? Or do you think we need a different lobbyist? And I guess that's where I'm just trying to figure out where you're coming from.
I would like to look at other opportunities. I mean, I've been in this world for probably 20 years and, you know, my husband does this for a living. And so there are measurable outcomes on how a lobbyist, you know, shows their goals. And, you know, the last time that Class came into their presentation, they basically listed off bills that I already knew from the newspaper, already knew because I look at this every day. It wasn't here are the bills that we did that came up in the legislature and here's how we effectively helped you guys. Here were the outcomes that we affected with Bill A, Bill B, Bill C. So I didn't see any kind of goals from that. I didn't see any kind of measurable outcomes from that presentation. And so that is what I'm looking for from a lobbying firm.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see your point. And maybe we need to, maybe as Mr. Watson said, we need to have a more specific request and information that's printed. But I, I had made many of the same notes that Ms. Owen has reviewed as I was sitting here that I do think that, you know, as far as the effectiveness, that's, that is definitely a room, room for improvement. But I think that part of the issue is that, and then I think the other, in that, in that, we do have a lot of duplication when we're hearing from TSBA and them. We're hearing some of the same information kind of after the fact. But I think the, the fact that they meet with Ms. Owen or, you know, our representative who happens to be Ms. Owen right now weekly is helpful because she's able then to, that, at that week, send an email to us to say, hey, this is coming up, we need this, you know, you guys need to be aware of this, which is helpful to the board. And as she stated, there are, I had this conversation also at TSBA with somebody, I think from one of the other, one of the other larger districts, that literally there are like maybe one handful of people who are advocating for public education. Meanwhile, I believe the number was well over 200. I'm not even sure. That's, I think it was over 200 of lobbyists who are lobbying, lobbying really not for public education. They're really lobbying for things that are going to take money away from public education. So just to have other voices, both of them are public school parents. That always, I think in the meeting that we have in Nashville with them at TSBA, that really always comes out in that meeting, I think specifically. They're both public school parents. So they're arguing, what they're arguing for us, they believe in. I mean, this is like, this is what they, this is what they, you know, they want for their own children. So they're arguing from a point of view that I think when, and I'm not opposed to the RFP idea. However, when you said that, I thought about, okay, we could do an RFP, but the fact that they argue as a parent would on behalf of public education, I think is helpful. And then the only, the other issue in thinking about if we wanted to go in a different direction, I, I don't know that it would be responsible for us to not vote to approve this right now because we haven't had conversation with the other districts. And we are part of this organization. So I'm not opposed to making a change, but I'm not saying... So I'm not opposed to making a change, but I'm not saying either way. I'm just saying that kind of as a point of, you know, what the right thing to do. I don't think it's the right thing to do to not approve this without having any conversation with any of the other districts. So what I would like to see this board do, I would like to see us go ahead and contact Tammy right now to ask her to set up something for us with the other four districts at TSBA and have the conversation and go from there. So for those reasons, I will be voting to approve this contract. And I do appreciate that the, the folks who've questioned, I think that's what we should do. But, but for these reasons, I'm gonna be voting for it.
Mr. McMillan.
Um, I was just gonna comment on, on, I think, I, I really don't know how effective they are. But they usually measure lobbyists by how effective they are at getting certain legislation asked or defeated. And, you know, if, I, I would say that, that, that you'll have enough votes to, to keep them, at least this time. But, uh, I don't know. People, anybody that has been the representative here, to the best of my knowledge, has been impressed with their style and they can talk the talk, but can they do the, the rest of it is my question, you know? I, I'm not saying they're not committed, you know, but you could be real, real committed, but not be very effective. And that's, you know, if it were in sports or something, that's, you know, maybe you didn't win enough games at this prestigious institution, so, you know, you get fired. But I'm not saying, and don't take that wrong, I'm not saying they should be fired. I'm just saying it's the world we live in. And I also, since you seem to be really familiar, as you should be, talk to them each time, Jennifer. Who would you say is the, the most effective organization over there now as far as lobbying? Not necessarily in education, I'm not talking about that.
I, I think that would be hard to say because when we're looking at, when we're looking at what our lobbyists are lobbying for, to say that they are specifically having an outcome might not be, might not be fair. Because when you look at a lobbyist for one organization, lobbying for their organization, you can say that. But we have similar groups lobbying for the same thing. So let's say that, let's, let's.
I don't want a big long explanation.
No, I'm not trying to give you one, but let's say that I had someone lobbying for Coke. Then, then what their outcome was, we could tell. But when we have Millsaps-Gowan and TSBA and sometimes TEA all lobbying for the same thing, I think it's, it's gonna be hard for us to say that this is the one group that made the difference. I think we can go back and look at outcomes and see exactly what we gained. But I think we'll have to realize that it was a com, a combination of efforts from Millsaps-Gowan and TSBA and whatever other public school interests were lobbying for that. I don't think we can break it out to just them because I don't think that's.
Excuse me.
That's gonna be fair. And I don't know who is the most effective lobbying organization.
You've never heard them say anything about, you know, whether the, anybody else that lobbies.
There are, there are a lot of very large organizations lobbying. So I don't know who is the most effective. That's out of the commonwealth.
Heard some mention of it somewhere along the way, you know? But, uh, no, I mean, they, uh, I just think it would be difficult to measure, you know, just what you said, you know? If something passes or if it doesn't pass. If everybody's on the same side, you know, do they have the, I guess what I'm saying is, do they really, no matter how much personally they're committed, do they have the firepower to make it happen?
I don't think I can answer that, but I think I can talk to our legislators and ask our legislators that question. I think that would be a more fair way to look at it.
Okay, why don't you?
Would that be useful?
Yeah, that would be useful. Why don't you survey our legislators and find out who they pay more attention to or how effective these people are?
I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bab.
And this is my last comment I'm making about this, but I think after hearing Ms. Henderson, I think one of the things that's come up is we're hiring an organization who really is not accountable to really anybody because we're these four groups that never talk to each other. And so I do think we have to come together as class and decide what do we want from our lobbyists, what our expectations are. And so I, I think there's a little bit of fault on our part and that's why I will support them this year. But I think there needs to be further conversations on how to get more out of what we're paying for. Or to, and they might be doing it. I think we just need to, we need to be asking for some reporting. And I think that's some fault of our own because we just, it doesn't seem, we, we almost need like a chair of class, I think. Maybe we unofficially do, but it almost seems like there's got to be somebody that's sort of a in charge person, which as far as I can tell, in class, there's not. It's just these four groups that sort of work independently, but call themselves something. So I think that we have to kind of take some ownership of this and to, to make it better and to make, to get more out of our lobbyists too.
I don't know who was first. Ms. Bounds.
No, I just wanna commend this board because I do think this conversation has been very beneficial. And I like Susan's suggestion and Virginia raising the question. But I do think we have to keep in mind what Ms. Owen said. And having been down there and testified before educational committees, I felt very small and insignificant, no matter what I had to say as a public school teacher when I saw all the lobbyists lining the walls and all the relationships that they can build because they live down there. They work down there and they party together and eat together. And you also have to consider how effective is a lobbyist? I'm not sure Millsaps and Gowan have the largest budget, but some of these lobbyists and the organizations they represent have really large budgets to lobby with. So anyway, but I thank the board for their discussion and I think it has been very productive. And we can take some good steps forward from here before next year and this agreement comes back before the board.
Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I do agree. I think this has been a very healthy, productive discussion. And I do agree with what you said. I think there's accountability on both ends. And it is hard when, you know, there's four large districts that don't talk. But what I would like to see is accountability on our end, but accountability on their end as well. Because I was very underwhelmed with that presentation of here's a list of bills. But where were the steps that, here's the steps we took to affect those bills? Or to create favorable, you know, measures for you guys with those bills? So I think it's on both ends, those sides for sure.
So any more discussion on that item? Last one. And discussion and possible action on superintendent search. And Ms. Satterfield's not here tonight, so Ms. Bounds or Ms. Henderson?
Yes, I'm gonna take the lead on this. So our committee met right before the holidays. We met on December 17th. And we had an amazing meeting, I thought. It was very productive and it was a great meeting with our committee. Some of the things that came out of that were the superintendent job duties. I know that we have a separate document for that. But looking more into it, a lot of the boards have those duties within the policies, which we do. It is in Section C. So Section C 120, that runs through C 125, have to do with the duties of the superintendent. And so we thought maybe we could discuss those at the January 19th policy review meeting. And that way it was just more cohesive since they're already documented in those policies. Mr. Deupler, does that sound correct to you that we would discuss those at the policy review meeting?
Yes, that, yes, thank you, Mr. and Ms. Henderson. Yes, absolutely, you can, you can discuss, I mean, the policies at policy review. If you wanted to tweak them at that point.
Yeah.
Or, or the board could, could discuss them as part of, part of the overall superintendent search as well. I mean, so yeah, it's, it's totally up to the board on how you all want to handle it.
Okay, so we can move those to the policy review, which I believe is January 19th?
January 19th, yeah. That way if anyone wants to amend any of those policies, we have time to look at those. We can discuss that at that time. That sounds good with the board. Another thing we discussed was the salary, which is a big, you know, part of this. And our committee discussed other similar school districts in Tennessee, the same size. And we looked at their salaries. And so it was our committee's recommendation to start salary negotiations at $250,000. We felt like that was a competitive salary, along with the other districts of our size. Anybody had anything to say about that, if you have anything to add in?
We did discuss several different ways of approaching this. And we decided as a group against a salary range, that it would be more effective and better to start at. We could always, depending on our candidates and their qualifications, go up if we need to. But then we didn't want to overstate it, so. And then we also, I think I made the point of, because there are a lot, several of the larger districts have larger salaries, but their teachers also make considerably more. And we talked about that and just realizing where our teacher pay is across the state and not creating discouragement amongst the rest of the staff of Knox County by overpaying our top official. So anyway.
Yeah, that's a good point. We did wanna be mindful of the salaries that our staff just across the border making.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Ms. Henderson, just to clarify, the $250,000 that's being recommended, that does not include benefits, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Ms. Bab.
Did y'all discuss anything about moving expenses if it's someone from away? Because I thought that was something Tammy had brought up that we might wanna.
Yeah, we did talk about moving expenses, I believe.
I think it's in the, in addition to, go ahead, Mr. Deupler, you may have called better than I.
Yes, thank you.
That was before Christmas.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was. Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Thank you, Ms. Bounds. Uh, that was discussed. I mean, it is in the TSBA sample contract. But, but what was discussed at the committee meeting was the board can deal with that as it comes up. I mean, obviously it depends upon what, which, which candidate you all decide upon. If the candidate's coming from a great distance, then, then that certainly should be a consideration.
Okay, yes, moving along. Another thing that we discussed at our committee meeting was, you know, after comparing the superintendent contract that we currently have to TSBA's template contract, they're very similar, but our committee's recommending that we add a medical examination clause and a criminal background clause to our current contract. And I know Mr. Deupler was working on that contract. I believe, is this the one, so everyone should have a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah, of that sample contract.
And I can, I can add to that if you'd like, Ms. Henderson.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so yes, as Ms. Henderson said, I strongly recommended adding the criminal background check. Obviously, since the last superintendent search, the, the Tennessee code's become much more stronger when it comes to criminal background checks in, in public schools. So add that section. That's number 10 on, on the, on the form contract, page three. And then the other one, I felt like this was more optional, but I mean, but, but the committee felt like this was, this was a good add. And that's, and that's number 13, medical examination at page five. And, and as you can see there, it does add, there was, in, in, in the prior contract with Mr. Thomas, there was a, a section on that, just a little bit, talking about where, where it talks about the, the termination, I believe it was. 10F, I think I, I referred to, yeah. Uh, and I need to, I need to change that site. I'm looking at it right now. So that's, that's 11F now. The numbering changed. But in any event, 11F talks about mental or physical illness or incapacity. So really, if you're gonna have that, it would be a good idea to have the medical examination portion as well. And that's something that's, that complies with state and federal law. I know Human Resources uses that as well, so, yeah.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, ma'am chair. My question on the medical examination, would that, those, that information be, that would not be open to public records or anything of that nature? That would be private information, I would assume?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bab.
And I, I'm just wondering, because it doesn't, it seems like we require this. I know I went for something, you have to do a drug test. It seems like that should be part of this along with the background check. I don't know if that would go under the medical examination part, but to me, if we're requiring it of our teachers and stuff, I think, I personally think that should be a requirement of passing a drug test.
That, that would be, that would be separate. I mean, the medical examination would just be for, fit, fitness for duty is, you know, is what, is what it's called in HR world. So I mean, I, I mean, that's what it would be, but yeah, a drug test would be separate and, and we would have to put that, a separate clause in there.
I don't know what people think about that. I just think it's real smart.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Ms. Bab, I completely agree with that. When are we gonna be asked to approve this contract? I know we'll have to, I'm assuming that when we have a superintendent we wanna hire, we're gonna approve it then. But I'm, we have to have some kind of draft that that person would see. So are we gonna be asked to approve this tomorrow, or Wednesday, I mean?
Ms. Henderson or Mr. Deupler?
Okay, thanks. Thanks, ma'am chair. Uh, that was not the intent.
Okay.
This was, this is what I would call a beefed up draft.
Sure.
After, after all the information's been gathered thus far, you know, this, this would be a great contract, in my opinion, to use once you get that final candidate, but there are gonna be tweaks and things. So, so this would just be a template used. And then the board, once, once it has its candidate, you all can hash out if you wanna tweak this or tweak that. But I mean, you know, this is, and I think TSBA agrees, obviously, because I mean theirs was fairly similar to this one, that, that this would be a good template to use.
Right. So right now, it's just a, it would be a working draft that would be presented to potential candidates as here's a draft of what our contract could look like.
Correct, correct. And there would, I mean, what's, what's happened in the past is there's been some negotiation. Once you all settle on a candidate, so I mean, after that negotiation is when more of a final draft would then come before the board.
Thank you.
Ms. Horn.
I can't remember my question. Go to, did you have, um, what was my question? Oh, I think I know what it was. So the, the medical examination part, did you say, I think you said this, Ms. Henderson, that that was part of TSBA's contract that they sent, is that correct? Okay, okay, all right. I just, I was just wondering if this is standard, that kind of thing.
Right. So what we did was take our current contract and then TSBA sample contract and saw kind of what we were missing. And then it was our recommendations to add those back in.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Just out of curiosity, as you said that, comparing those two documents, I'm wondering if there's other things that even TSBA wouldn't have had in their draft that maybe other large districts have considered? Have we looked at any other large district contracts like Metro Nashville's or Hamilton or anything like that?
Mr. Deupler.
I mean, I mean, our office largely developed the contract and, you know, we, I mean, it does have some things that the TSBA contract doesn't have, such as nepotism, for instance.
Right.
So, you know, we feel, again, we feel good about this contract. But if there are any other aspects that you all might wanna see, I mean, yeah, feel free to reach out to me and I'll be happy to talk about it and then we can, then we can bring it. and I'll be happy to talk about it, and then we can, then we can bring it back to the board as a whole.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I mean, for me, if, there was, the only other sources I would go to is existing contracts of the large districts, so is there, I know those would be publicly available, do we know the easiest way to access those?
So Ms. Coaten is offering to reach out to the districts, the large districts.
I was going to say, if you reach out to the districts, because I reached out to several districts regarding their job descriptions that surrounded us, and they were very forthcoming with giving me that information, so I'm sure they would with their contracts, too.
Thank you.
The last thing we discussed was, so we had an additional discussion in our meeting about the superintendent evaluation process, and our committee has offered to continue working with TSBA to hammer out the evaluation framework, if the board thinks that that's a good idea for us to do, since the evaluation will be tied into the hiring process.
And then you would bring it, I guess, to the board for approval with the contract?
Correct, yes, yes.
Mr. Watson?
I don't know if you're looking for kind of endorsement of that idea, but I, I think it's a good idea for you all to continue on that. The one thing that I would ask for, and I think I've been asking for it for a year as we look at evaluation again, is, I really think it will benefit our superintendent and our system to have some component of our evaluation that's a 360. So just as, as you all work toward that, if you can look at that aspect of it.
And we actually brought that up, Dana, knowing that you wanted that 360, so we intend to look at, I mean, to hopefully do that component as well.
Yeah, yeah. We thought since, you know, we're hiring our new superintendent, it would be a good time to kind of go over our evaluation process, and, you know, tweak anything that needs to be tweaked in that.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to make sure I'm on, I'm clear on what we need to vote on on Wednesday. Obviously, if somebody from your committee makes a motion to continue with that committee to do that, that superintendent evaluation framework, we'd need to vote on that. Is there anything else regarding this document or anything else? So that would be the only thing we'd need to vote on?
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Duipler's recommending the motion include the starting salary, or whatever that baseline is, as well?
Correct.
So, is that it, Ms. Henderson, for the superintendent search committee report?
That concludes our superintendent report.
Yes, thank you for doing that. So moving on to board forum. Mr. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess kind of first to the students, of course, I hope they all had a great winter break, we are starting school tomorrow, and I hope that all of our students are excited to get back to school, get back to learning, and kind of finish out the school year strong and all of that. Also, kind of to the board, I mentioned this at our last meeting, but kind of regarding teachers, I don't know, what are your thoughts on perhaps putting out a survey to see what their feelings are with the district, with just how, in general, how things are going, just kind of maybe get a better overview of their experience with education and teaching and things like that? What are everyone's thoughts about that?
And that's something we can ask the superintendent to, to explore, is-
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
And we do have a public forum speaker, too, I've not forgotten. And Mr. Watson? Ms. Bev?
Ms. Horn?
No, I don't think so. I think, I was just saying, I think we do that in the spring, so we already have a mechanism in place to do that, so I think that they'll be, they're planning on doing it. I don't have anything else, thank you.
Ms. Henderson? Ms. Bounds? Mr. McMillan? And we, Ms. Coaten?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one public forum speaker tonight, it's Lance McCold. And Mr. McCold, if you can state your name and county residence for the record, you have three minutes.
Lance McCold, Knox County, thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to speak about the, the contract that the committee's been discussing for the new superintendent. And I like what, I was at the discussion on 17th, and I thought, I liked what they were talking about, I thought they were a little farther along than they seemed to be. But one of the things that, that I want to highlight for you, they are talking about competitive salary and benefits, covering moving costs, doing background checks, drug tests, medical tests, and paying for those things. You know, you wouldn't, if you want to hire somebody, you didn't, wouldn't do any less than any of this stuff. You pay them a, offer them a competitive salary, competitive benefits, you, if you bring them in from out of town, you cover moving costs, this is the way the professional world works. And so I want to commend them for, you know, this is what I perceived as the direction they were headed. But I want to point out that there's, that there's a big gap between the way we're approaching the superintendent hire and the way we treat our teachers and other staff. Teachers and other staff are required to pay for drug tests, they're required to pay for background tests, I'm told, a, a, a person, a friend of mine applied to be a superintendent, I mean, a substitute, it costs her $125. That's two days' worth of work after she gets to be a substitute teacher. Now, if you, if, I know we have a huge shortage of teachers and substitutes and other kinds of staff, and if we treat them like this, no wonder we have a shortage. So I guess I want to say, let's take the approach that we have with hiring the superintendent, and let's pry it to the rest of our staff. We have tens of millions of dollars we've got to deal with the COVID crisis, we have the money, let's treat the rest of our staff with the same kind of respect that we are treating the hiring of our new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCold. And with nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.